Thank you very much, Chris, and good morning, everybody, members of the public, guests and staff. Good to see everybody again. It's been a bit of a break, but all these happy, smiling faces is always, always good to get back and see everybody. So we'll call this meeting to order. And before I get into the agenda, I just wanted to bring a few announcements to folks' attention. As many people may know, we had a very unfortunate incident leading out of Georgian Bay into the mouth of the Nahtuasaga River this last weekend where a young gentleman lost his life in a sea-doo accident. And I just think it's important that when we have these types of tragedies, that we make it clear that our thoughts and prayers are with the family, and that we wish them all the best moving forward with their grief and trying to get through that tragic loss to their family. The other loss we have in Wasaga Beach this past week was a fine gentleman who is, is the epitome, or was the epitome, of a public service representative for our community, Mr. Bill Friday passed away. And so, again, our thoughts and prayers are with the Friday family. Bill will be greatly missed in our community, just a wonderful gentleman, very generous, loving, caring individual. And then I think I'll move on to our treasurer, and I think we have an announcement with a new staff member. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, your worship, and good morning, members of council and staff and visitors. I would like to introduce our newest, newest member of treasury on our treasury team, Catherine Middleton. She's our finance manager. And at this time, I'd like to ask her to come forward and just tell us a little bit about her background. Thank you.
Excellent. Catherine, welcome. Come on forward, join the team. Happy to have you.
So thank you, your worship and members of council. As mentioned, my name is Catherine Middleton. I'm a chartered professional accountant and certified general accountant. I'm working on completing my diploma in municipal administration offered through the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario with one course left to complete. I graduated from Nipissing University with my bachelor's, bachelor's of commerce degree. I was most recently employed by the Simcoe County District School Board as a financial analyst. In my role, I gained significant experience with budget and financial statement preparation, asset management, and various account ledger analysis and reconciliation. Prior to working at the school, school board, I worked at Clearview Township as a finance assistant. In my role there, I gained considerable knowledge and understanding of municipal administration and the financial processes and requirements within the municipal act. Some of my duties at Clearview Township included accounts payable, accounts receivable, and utility billing. Throughout my career, I have developed strong communication and teamwork skills by working closely with department managers and the public. I enjoy the challenge of new tasks and feel confident that I can both learn and contribute a great deal from the finance manager position. I'm very excited to become part of the town of Wasaga Beach team. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Catherine, and again, welcome to the team. We're happy to have you. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. And one last item, I think, is important. Early on in this term of council, we, we were able to promote one of our other staff, our, our deputy clerk, Ms. Laura Borland, who had graduated from one of the courses at AMCTO with respect to becoming a clerk. And we've now received notification that Laura has completed all four of those courses: Municipal Administration Program, Municipal Accounting and Finance Program, Municipal Law Program, and Employment Law and Human Resources Certificate Program for municipalities. And I'm very happy and proud to say, Laura, that you have completed all of these courses with honor. So again, a shining star in our staff here. We can't say enough good about our staff. They are second to none. But Laura, you certainly stand out today. So thank you and congratulations. All right. All right, we'll now move on to the agenda, and we'll start with our land acknowledgement. Madam Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. We begin our meeting by recognizing the First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples of Canada as traditional stewards and caretakers of the land. We acknowledge that the town of Wasaga Beach is located within the boundaries of Treaty 18, the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Tiontati, and Wendat, and is home of many First Nations, Métis, and Inuits people as part of an intricate nationhood that reaches across Turtle Island. At this time of truth and reconciliation, we welcome the opportunity to work together towards new understandings and new relationships and ask guidance in all that we do.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Moving on to item number two, disclose your peculiar interests. I have none before me at this time. If at some point throughout the meeting you feel you have a peculiar interest, please let us know at that time. Moving on to item number three, open forum. I see nothing listed. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have anybody for open forum?
We do not have anybody registered, your worship.
All right, I'll just ask members of the public if there's anyone here who wishes to come forward and comment on any of the items on the agenda today before we carry on. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. It is resolved that the contents of the agenda of August 10, 2023 be approved as amended. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, your worship. Just note for council that 11.2 has been removed from the agenda. It'll be brought forward at a future meeting by Councilor DeLeo.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, could I have a mover and a seconder, please, for this? Moved by Councillor White, seconded by Councillor Ego, all in favor. That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number five, deputations, presentations, petitions in public meetings. We do have a couple today. The first one is the Rural Ontario Medical Program calling with General and Marine Hospital. And I believe we have Ms. Angela Lewin, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, with us online today, to make this presentation. So good morning, Angela, and welcome.
Thank you, your worship. So yeah, my name is Angela, and I'm representing the Rural Ontario Medical Program, and I'll be giving my presentation today. So I'm just going to share my screen. And we'll get started. Awesome. So the presentation that I'll be giving today is something that we've put together here at the program, which is addressing the youth mental health crisis in the South Georgian Bay region. So just to give a bit of background information on myself, I'm going into my third year of medical school at Queen's University, and I'm currently working as a research student at the Rural Ontario Medical Program. And if you're not familiar with this organization, we are provincially funded, and we focus on medical education and community integration. And we also are involved in a number of quality improvement initiatives. And this mental health project that I'll be talking about today is one of the initiatives that we have going on. And so, to give some background on the project, I'm sure many of you are aware, but mental health is a rising crisis, both nationally, provincially, and locally. And it's been recognized that young people specifically have the highest mental health and addictions need. But Ontario does have a gap in programming to meet these needs. Moreover, it's been recognized that marginalized groups are more likely to experience mental health and addiction struggles. And furthermore, it's been recognized that primary care providers are needing mental health tools which can be readily implementable and used in their busy practices. And then to link that more to our local community, in the South Georgian Bay and Springwater Community Safety and Well-Being Plan, it was also recognized that mental health care was a prevalent issue within the community. And from the local surveys that were done, investigating the barriers to mental health care, some themes were identified, and these included, one, being knowledge and awareness. So our residents are unaware of what services do exist. And two, navigation was a major barrier. So residents have been struggling to navigate the network of services and resources out there. And from that, some commitments were outlined in this safety and well-being plan. So these included, one, ensuring that residents, their families, and service providers are aware of the services that they are, they can access. So this is to address the awareness piece. And then also identifying ways to improve the availability, accessibility, accommodation, and acceptability of services in the community. And this kind of ties into the navigation piece of things and helping to make these services more easily accessible to the community. There we go. And so, as a solution to this, sorry, there we go. As a solution to this, over at ROMP, we've kind of brainstormed and come up with a solution to help address these issues. So in terms of target audience, we wanted to address the youth in particular who are struggling with mental health and addictions. And by doing so, we created this centralized resource which consolidated relevant services in the area. And this would service the South Georgian Bay area. And in order to do this, we researched and verified different services in the surrounding area through the students at the company, as well as in collaboration with physicians and community members. And we were able to do this by funding provided by a donation from the Henry J. and Marilyn Knowles family of Collingwood. And so, the first version of this looked like this, and this was our pilot version, and this was published to the CGMH website, our website, as well as the Collingwood Collegiate Institute website. And from there, we wanted to assess the impact of this resource to see if it was effective in addressing the issue. So we conducted a survey at the 2017 Interprofessional Health Care and Wellness Research and Education Day, which was attended by numerous community members, physicians, other healthcare professionals. And from the survey, we found that 46% of respondents were not aware of local youth mental health resources, which kind of lines up with some of the information that's been identified. And it was also found that 89% of respondents felt like their awareness of local youth mental health resources improved following presentation of the guide. So we found this to be impactful in the community. From there, we wanted to continue to improve the project. And in 2021, we had a major reevaluation, and we found several areas of improvement that we wanted to do. So this included finding support specific to equity-deserving groups to promote inclusivity. And this ties back into the background piece where certain groups are especially susceptible to struggling with their mental health. We wanted to increase accessibility by integrating features to improve the navigation, because, as mentioned, navigation is a large barrier to mental health. So we wanted to make our tool even more accessible. And we also wanted to optimize impact by further distributing the tool to be more easily accessible and known by service providers and users. And that's kind of tying into why we're making this presentation today as well. And so, in order to do this, we continued to meet with key community stakeholders to get feedback and get their insight. And so this included psychiatrists, other physicians, resident doctors. We talked to parents of children with lived experiences. We collaborated with the CGMH Mental Health Services Unit, including crisis workers, social worker there, and then just other community members as well. And from there, we were able to update into our second version. So as you can see, it looks a little bit different. We added a legend key which contains different features to help make the tool more easily navigatable, navigable. So, for example, if someone is approaching this tool, and they want to find something that's virtual, there's an icon there that can help them easily identify which resources they can access. And then furthermore, we added new categories, including culturally-specific care. So lots of resources for Indigenous people, as well as LGBTQ2S+ services. So lots of resources locally available there. And then we also tying back into increasing the impact of the tool, we published this to handouts.ca, which is a fantastic online resource, which was started by Dr. Chisholm at CGMH. And this is for emergency department patients and physicians to access. So we had a mental health section added with this youth mental health resource, as well as a similar resource for adults as well. And so, we're at the stage of distribution. So we're collaborating with community volunteers to send this resource off to key to send this resource off to key community hubs. So this includes elementary and high schools. We've sent this off to community and youth centers, the hospital, the CHC, family health team, churches and other community locations. And so, now at the point of what can you do to help, we're hoping to upscale the project's impact by continuing to increase promotion and raise awareness that this tool exists in order to help the community. And furthermore, highlighting that this project can only be done through the work of students who come in each summer to help update and increase the impact of the project, which is done through the Canadian Summer Jobs Grant. And so, we're also open to facilitating community collaboration. We're open to adding and getting feedback to the tool itself. So lots of things to be done on this end. And so I just wanted to leave off with the contact information for us at ROMP, our phone number, as well as the email that you can reach me at. And then I wanted to thank you all for your time for listening to this presentation and hearing about some of the work we're doing at ROMP. And then I've also just cited my references here. So, I will stop sharing my screen now.
Thank you very much, Angela. Very well done. Excellent presentation. Looks to me like you're gonna make yourself an excellent doctor and we'll be lucky to hopefully have you in this area looking after the good folks Wasaga Beach, Callingwood and surrounding areas. Members of council, any questions for Angela? Deputy Mayor Snell?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for your presentation. This is a subject that's near and dear to many people's hearts, but this is one that I've personally walked. And so I appreciate the efforts because it is a meat grinder of a system for family members trying to find supports to help their young people that they love. The other issue too is it's great to get the resources out, but provincially and federally, there needs to be more funding. Because part of the barrier is the access to the services because they're so overwhelmingly in demand that a lot of families end up sitting on wait lists for very long periods of time. And so that's a piece that I hope that, you know, perhaps your group can help with advocacy. One question I had was, are you distributing this to libraries? And also too, would this be perhaps an appropriate link to have on our website, our town website under resources? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and for your question. Much appreciated. So we have been distributing to libraries locally in the area. So, that's just one facet. And then we would love to display this on the community's website as well. Any areas that we can increase the impact and get it out to more people would be fantastic. So definitely open to this outlet.
Thank you. Other members of council, any questions or comments for Angela? No, I think that's it. Angela, thank you again very much. And we'll just make a note for staff to reach out so as that we can arrange to have this moved over and put onto the town's website as well. Thank you very much, Angela, and best of luck to you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, we're now moving on to item number five.
Sorry, your worship. I apologize. We'll just have a motion to receive.
Alright, oh, thank you very much. Alright, I do have a motion. The council received the presentation from the Rural Ontario Medical Program calling with General and Marine Hospital for information. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Counselor Bélanger and Counselor Timms, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to five point two, a deputation, the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay. And Ms. Rosalyn Morse, I believe is with us here today. Good morning, Rosalyn, and welcome. And the floor is yours.
Good morning and thank you very much for your time. My name is Rosalyn Morrison and I am the volunteer chair of the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay. And we're here today to invite Wasaga Beach to become a regional collaborative program partner and invest in this year's regional discussion, which is called "Community Planning: Creating a More Resilient and Sustainable Future Today." So some of you may not be overly familiar with the institute as we're a relatively young organization. So I'd like to share some background with you and highlight some of our recent achievements in a slide presentation. And I think I would just press this button to move. I got it. Thank you. So, so the institute is a unique organization that brings together residents, business, municipal, provincial, nonprofit and philanthropic leaders to discuss and try to collaborate on some of our most pressing issues and some of our exciting opportunities. Our vision is to harness the power of people in place in this beautiful area we call Southern Georgian Bay and to grow three things: social, environmental and economic prosperity, a triple line, a triple bottom line, if you will, and become the smartest, greenest and healthiest and most caring region in Ontario. The institute is unique in the work that it does. And we're volunteer run and a non-for-profit think and do tank. We now have over 550 newsletter subscribers and our events which are held both virtually and in person attract a substantial audience. I know, I'll hit the right button in a minute. There we go. So when we think of Southern Georgian Bay, a lot of people ask, what's the footprint? We've had a lot of uptake from six municipalities across this region, including Wasaga Beach and Clearview, Callingwood, the Blue Mountains, Gray Highlands and Miford. And our interest is expanding right over to Midland and Owen Sound. We're doing a lot of work in four priority areas. I don't know, it switches two slides at once, so that's exciting for me. You know, I will just speak to the slides. So what can I tell you? We've got four priority areas that we cover. We've got business and innovation. We've got a regional arts network, social finance and affordable housing, and sustainability and the green economy. So we look at the challenge and we come together to try to collectively create the solutions. We tie our work to the Sustainable Development Goals. The Sustainable Development Goals are 17 of them in Canada and 192 other countries signed on to them in 2015. We focus particularly on SDG 11. And why do we do that? It's about sustainable communities, which I think we're all interested in. And it covers all the things that communities need to pay attention to. Affordable housing, climate action, transportation, protecting our natural assets, Wasaga Beach being a beautiful one, and cultivating our cultural assets. And really thinking about how can we integrate our planning together and align objectives. We believe that greatest progress will be made with multi-sector partnerships and collective leadership. It's a new concept and our organization, which is young, is learning about what that means. It takes a little bit more upfront work, but the results are exponentially better and much more greater impact. If people ask you, what does the institute do? The institute does three things. We connect people. A lot of us in Wasaga Beach might not know people in Miford who are working on the same issues. So we connect people. We hold community discussions between five and six a year. And then we nurture collaborative initiatives for people who put up their hand and say, you know what? I think we can get further, farther if we work together. Thank you for whoever did that. Some notable achievements over the last few months. We had community conversations over the pandemic. And the arts and arts organizations and art businesses were probably one of the areas of our communities that were hardest hit over the pandemic. So we had specific gatherings for that group virtually. And over the course of, I think it was 18 months, they developed a strategy for the region in terms of what do we need to do. And first and foremost was, we need to connect. So this strategy is on our website and the arts, South Georgian Bay Arts Network was launched just last October with a wonderful arts event. And this is an opportunity where we can really connect people who often work on their own and have greater impact in terms of what the arts can do for our communities. In December, we had a great event called "Multi-Sector Partnerships and Philanthropy", where four philanthropists came forward and talked about their story, about how they are seeing partnerships with business and governments, with nonprofits and with themselves as philanthropists really start to cook on some of our difficult issues. And in fact, at that event, a philanthropist came forward with his wife and announced a $1 million South Georgian Bay Innovation Fund. So these are exciting times indeed. We have people who are leaning in to try to help. In March, we had an in-person strategy session. We had over 75 people participating and co-creating our work plan for this year. And in the spring, we launched our South Georgian Bay Affordable Housing Toolkit. If you've not had a chance yet, I would encourage you to go to our website and A, sign up for our newsletter, And secondly, take a peek at the Affordable Housing Toolkit. A lot of us have no idea about the issues in housing. So it's kind of a quick way to learn about it and understand what our community challenge is and how we can come together with some solutions. In particular, we're looking at social finance and the impact that things like land trusts, community bonds and cooperatives. And how do we piece all of these things together in a meaningful way to bring the price point of our units that we're building down to what our service sector economy people can afford? Next slide, thank you. So last year, we had a series called "Local Sustainable Economies", looking at what does that mean? How can we strengthen our own local economy? We learned some hard lessons during the pandemic. All of these series recordings of events are on our website. And you can just take a peek to ones that are of interest to you. This year, "Community Planning: Creating a More Resilient and Sustainable Future Today" is important because as we think about what our issues are, we do have to plan forward. And how do we align resources? And how do we ensure that we get to where we want to go as quickly as possible? So, today we're asking for your support to become a program partner. It is a collaborative activity. And we have had two events so far, virtual in the spring around housing. So the volunteer design team who created the Affordable Housing Toolkit unpacked it for us. There's a lot of information there, but they used words and they painted a picture of how we can move through this together. That is on our website, under Events 2023. And then we had a great conversation with a community that's making progress in Ottawa, the Ottawa Land Trust, in terms of how they are purchasing land, they're purchasing buildings, and they are devoting them exclusively to affordable housing. So what we want to do now is have a few more things with your help. On October 20th, we want to have an event called "Sustainability and the Green Economy". It's really looking at new ways in economic development about what's happening and how do we begin to evolve our economies? That will take place in the Blue Mountains. We're going to have a Fall Housing Forum. That will take place November 17th in Miford. And what we want to do there is paint a picture for all of us in terms of what's the ecosystem it takes, A, to build shelters, homes, to build homes for people, whether they're apartment buildings or whether they're single family or townhouses or whatever. And then what are our gaps? And what are our gaps further to bring those unit costs of places to live down to what people can afford? And we're also going to be looking at creating a social enterprise hub in this area. Social enterprise is a new way of doing business. These businesses have intentional triple bottom lines, not only with a profit indicator, but also with social indicators and environmental indicators. And we also want to, again, be celebrating the arts by having another regional arts gathering. So our ask today, just to be clear, is that Wasaga Beach becomes a program partner. There are three levels. Lead partners are investing $10,000. Supporting partners are investing $5,000. And community partners are investing $2,500. We hope that members of council and members of staff would participate on the design teams to ensure that we are all aligning our objectives in ways that work for all of us. Callingwood has committed to becoming a lead program partner. The Blue Mountains is making that decision next week. Miford has confirmed that they will be a supporting partner. I'm in discussions with Clearview and will be making a deputation to Gray Highlands next week. So this is an invitation for you to lean in and join the bigger conversation that's taking place. We do believe that collective leadership and discussing ideas together will get us to where we need to go. And obviously, the benefits would be that you're going to be enabling free programming for everyone in this region to participate in co-creating the planning, to contribute in a different way to the thousands of volunteer hours that we are contributing. And we're very happy actually to be seeing the progress that is being made when we come together. We hope that you will become a 2023 program partner and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Rosalyn. Questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Bélanger and then Counselor Ego?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. And certainly, the priorities and the challenges that we need to deal with are, you know, extensive, they're complicated. Personally, I have been invited to join your two events and have not. And I guess this offered some clarification. But there's been many, many organizations that have been working on some of these issues prior to the initiation of your group. And in fact, I can tell you, as a member of council, I could not possibly even keep up with the reading with everything related to environmental, related to affordable housing, because there are so many organizations out there that are working in that area. And I guess I'm a little confused as to when we talk about connectivity and harnessing this, I just feel that right now, there's a ton of duplication and overlap. And as a member of council or a council in general, you know, what are our best options? Now, as a council, we're in the process of establishing an environmental advisory committee for the first time. We declared an environmental emergency approximately a year and a half ago. We also are going to initiate an affordable housing task force. Our CAO has extensive knowledge, had been in Brampton and actually had been acknowledged for the toolkit they had created there. So, I guess I'm looking for that clarity as to, are we trying to pull all of this together so that we are not getting lost in the noise of so many organizations working on the same initiatives?
Yes, I appreciate your question and your comment about are we trying to pull all this together? Because believe me, none of us wanted to get into these issues. They are so deep and they are so complex. And so what we're trying to do is bring people together so that people aren't working in silos, especially in this region. And we are plugging in to learning from each other, which accelerates the progress. And so, it may seem like a small step, but it's not. It's big in terms of getting people together and saying, okay, where are we on all of this? And that's the function of the institute really, is to bring people together, to present that high level knowledge, and then to say, what are we going to do together? So it's, it's, it may look like people are duplicating efforts, but there will be many businesses and organizations and governments and philanthropists. and organizations and governments and philanthropists that need to be working on a variety of issues or subsets of these issues. But we need a frame to be able to pull them together to say at a high level, okay, these are the things perhaps we need to be doing in this sequence. So you're right, it's challenging times for all of us, and we do need to carve out the learning time, which a lot of us don't do, and the strategy time, which a lot of us don't do, and say, okay, where can we invest our time and effort and resources for the greatest impact? That's the right question.
Thank you. Councilor Ego?
Thank you, and thank you, Rosalyn, for the amazing presentation, and Joe, for your comments. I mean, yes, we're out in this field and hearing all the same things. I won't repeat what Councilor Joe has said, but it was an amazing presentation. Your website looks so informative and easy to understand. How long have you been doing this? Like, when did you form this group? Was it '21?
It was incorporated in 2015 as a nonprofit. And in 2018, we actually had our first, I call it acid test, for community engagement at a large scale. And so in 2018, we had our first Community Innovation Day, and about 95 people from across the region came together to talk about seven big topics. And then at the end of that, we said, okay, who's going to put up their hand and join a design team to begin to figure out what's coming out of this? What are we going to do? And that's always the moment of truth, right? So I was delighted that four people put up their hands and said, we're going to take a crack at this regional arts thing. And that's why we have the proof point of how the Institute should be functioning. You have those community conversations, people do put up their hands, and these four people, only four people, kept meeting and having coffees and so on. And we had an event in 2019, and then more events over the pandemic. Now we have a regional arts strategy. Now we have a new network. So that's how things happen when we want to be doing things at a larger scale. And I will say that the pandemic, it was horrible, and I would say that it enabled us to pivot, move virtually, and to take advantage of bringing people together a little bit more easily across the region.
Yeah, thanks very much for that. It certainly shows a commitment and gives that trail back there. And you're right, the moment of truth is stepping up and staying committed, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Ego. Deputy Mayor Snell?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Rosalyn, for a great presentation. I've been following your group a little bit as you've progressed over the time. And as a member of county council, I sit on the Affordable Housing Committee, so I will make it a point to attend, if not virtually, your events to plug in more with what you're doing.
That's great.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, Councilor White?
Thank you, Your Worship. You know, to touch on Councilor Bollonge's point, I do feel that a more regional strategic approach needs to be taken to affordable housing and homelessness across the province and even the country. You know, because what it's led to is all these different groups, you know, putting together, whether it's the county taking on affordable housing, municipalities taking on homelessness, and everyone's got these different toolkits, everyone's got these different stories of what's working, what's not working. Later on the agenda today, short-term rentals is one of these issues that's coming up, where we just don't see a lead from higher levels of government. So until then, until the other levels of government step up and start creating funding and resources in this space, I feel like it's up to the municipalities to join efforts and join our heads, and maybe it's in a bunch of different silos and see what we can come up with until then. So thank you for your presentation, and I support the initiative.
Thank you, Councilor White. Any other comments or questions? Councilor Tims?
Not to be left out, Your Worship. I've been following the Institute since pretty much the beginning and haven't participated other than looking and watching what you're doing, but I've been a great admirer for some time. I'm kind of excited about the social enterprise opportunity that the Institute is looking into, and I'm hoping that a number of us will attend your events coming up in the fall, because they're vitally important to us. But I definitely support what you're doing. I'm a strong believer in not duplicating other people's efforts, but there really is a good reason to make sure that everybody understands what all the other groups are doing and how to build on that and get the word out. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. May I just add a comment to that? Social enterprises, just to repeat, triple bottom line. So these are businesses that are thinking about holistic ways of conducting business. And the federal government, I think it was about, I don't know, two years ago, announced $750 million over 10 years to nurture more social enterprises, to actually achieve some of the Sustainable Development Goal pieces. The community foundation Gray Brews is a distributor of those funds for some of the area. So it's something that we all, you know, it just makes sense to learn more about it and to plug in and see what we can do in terms of putting things into our own economic development plans.
Thank you very much, Rosalyn. Again, great presentation. Thank you for being here. We do have a resolution, but I think, Madam Clerk, I'll look to you, because we may want to change that resolution somewhat. You want to speak to that?
Thank you, Your Worship. If it's council desire to explore this opportunity more, we could refer the item back to staff. That'll allow staff to liaise with the applicable committees as well and get some feedback. And we could bring a recommendation back on a partnership opportunity if you'd like. And if you do, I do have a motion prepared.
All right. So having heard that, we want more on this, more information on this from staff, I'm assuming, from council? All right. So Madam Clerk, if you'd read that motion, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. The proposed motion, that council receive the presentation from the Institute of Southern Georgian Bay for information, and that the presentation and the collaborative program partnership opportunity be referred to staff for review, and that a report be brought back to council at a future meeting on the opportunity.
Council, you've heard the motion. Could I have a move in a second, or please? Moved by Councilor Tims, seconded by Councilor White, all in favor. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Rosalyn. We'll get some information back from staff, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great day. All right, moving on to our next and final presentation, the Wasaga Saga 50th Anniversary. And I'll call upon Mr. Dave Morrison here today to come and speak before council with respect to the publication of hopefully a new edition of the Wasaga Saga. So good morning, Dave, and welcome.
Good morning, Your Worship, members of council. Thank you for taking time from your busy schedule. I promise to be as brief as I can be, but if any of you have ever met me, that may not happen, and I mean no offense by it. As we already know, my name is Dave Morrison. Along with me today, I have other members of the community that are very excited about this. Lorraine Grusik, who's the chair of your library board, and has been around in many ways for many years, and has been a mainstay in this community for many projects. And then Patricia Copeland, who is new to the community, but someone that I have known for probably 25 or 30 years, and she has done incredible work in whatever community she's in, and she's joined the library board. In addition to those two who are very supportive of this, and I'll talk about it more in a moment, in terms of what their roles were, I'd also point out that my brother, Jack Morrison, has joined us as well. My sister, Thelma Morrison, as you know, wrote the book, and Jack and I bookend her. He's the eldest, and I'm the baby. Got to love me. It's an old phrase, and baby nobody gets anymore, but I'm old. So the point is that, for those of you that didn't know her, and to be fair, she's been gone almost eight years, all right? And after a 10-year horrific battle with cancer and then Parkinson's that completely changed her as a person, it's easy to not know her, to be fair, all right? So just a very quick background, my sister was a national award-winning journalist, an author of books, an artist, very much an active individual in the community. She was the first female president of the Rotary Club. She was just involved. She loved Wasaga Beach, and she threw herself into everything that could be there. So the background to the book is that, in honor of the 25th anniversary of the town of Wasaga being created by the amalgamation of, I believe, its seven beaches, the council at the time approached my sister and commissioned her to write what has turned into the Wasaga Saga. And with the assistance of your CAO, whom I met with in preparation for this, probably a month ago, he indicated that to ensure everyone had access to this, because to be fair, they've been very difficult to get hold of for years, he had found some and went out of his way to make sure that all members of the council had a copy of the book. Now, many of you already had a copy, or you'd already seen it, but it was important to level the playing field, if you will. So as you are all aware, next year, in 2024, is the 50th anniversary. And it seems to me that anniversaries of that nature are things that every community wants to celebrate in order to show their spirit, their joie de vivre, their sense of community. And so it struck me that perhaps one of the best ways that we could do that, in conjunction with other activities, obviously, that there might be some interest in commissioning another edition. So we would have the 50th anniversary edition of this book, all right? And the vision that I have is that it would still be Thelma's book, but there would be an introduction written to the 50th anniversary concept, probably something from the mayor and council to indicate why they were supporting it, and then an additional number of chapters added to it. It's extremely important to understand that there's a difference between professional writers and people that like to put pen to paper or to type at the computer. And so to ensure that, Patricia Copeland is also a professional writer and very keen to participate in this program and has volunteered to write that. My brother and I would co-author the introduction, although that will end up with me writing it and him approving or disapproving or having me turn around to do it again. That's just the family process. I'm sure you all have that. And then, obviously, the mayor and council's message as well. There is a timeline that's of great consideration in this. Once the approval gets in place, there needs to be a couple things happening, and we're happy to take on responsibility of getting the book written, finding new photographs, et cetera, et cetera. But we also need to get it printed. And so once it's commissioned, council or staff need to find the appropriate publisher, the appropriate timeline, et cetera, et cetera, so that by the time there's the release of it, in whatever type of marketing extravaganza people chose that this council or staff to bring forward, we need to have various approvals and various steps happen fairly quickly. And so I apologize if that sounds like I'm pushing you. I'm not. I'm just reminding you of the restraints and realities of a calendar, all right? So it's simply the way it is. Ultimately, I also like to point out a couple things, just to remove any type of controversy, because there's nothing controversial about this, and there's no one involved in this that's remotely controversial. Well, except for me being the kid brother, but that's not your problem. So ultimately, I had a conversation, because there are two books, brilliant books, that were written. I'm biased, obviously. My sister is one of them. But Mary Watson wrote a spectacular book as well, and that needs to be acknowledged. So unfortunately, our community has lost her as well. But I spoke to Kathy Wild about this, and she got back to me and said that she had, she and Trish, the other sister, have no objections to this whatsoever, and in fact, offered their help and their support. They love the project, and they wanted to help in whatever way I thought was appropriate, or we thought was appropriate, moving forward. So that support has been there, and it's important to be aware of that. Secondarily, Andrew McNeil was very, I mean, Andrew McNeil was very supportive of this when I met with him. He was extremely positive to the idea. We did a lot of memory lane stuff in terms of his family, our old cottagers, as are mine. And a little bit of that background might help to understand kind of the transition that I think a lot of people do in Wasaga Beach. My family's a really good example. My grandfather, Ed Capes, built one of the first cottages in what was then Brock's Beach, on the bottom of Brock Avenue, in 1922, all right? My mother opened a music studio here and taught out of her own home on the river for decades. My sister moved up here and spent decades in the community as well. And I, who taught in Barry and have always been, spent every summer of my life here, have moved here about three years ago, and am now a permanent resident as well. So I think that idea of going from cottager to full-year pleasure seekers into permanent residents is a process that a great many people actually do in this community. So my ask, our ask, quite simply, what we need you to do is, if you agree, and I'll be happy to answer questions in a moment, but what we need is the support of council to say, that's a great project, we're going to get behind it. And so the ask, quite simply, is that council approve the publication of the 50th anniversary edition of the Wasaga Saga, and that funds be put aside in the 2024 budget to pay for the publication cost. I will add to that, that the idea of putting money in the 2024 budget was suggested by your CAO. And I'd also like to point out that much of this, and I know money's tight everywhere, I understand that, but the reality is that much of this would be cost recovery. I know that in the past, there were local stores, including Osbournes, including Pedro's, including variety places, that got copies from the town at cost and then sold them. They used to be available at the information center. I know that there were at least one of the cottage courts at the time that would give them away, all right? Like, literally a gift for families that were coming for more than, you know, for a couple weeks or whatever, and they would gift it out. So there's multiple ways in which I can see this going out into the community. I mean, another possibility I thought of, although I'm not suggesting I'm the marketing guy, I'm just saying, I don't think anyone should be worried about how this would play out. I think it could play out with a little creativity reasonably well. I mean, real estate is about to boom more, I mean, it's been booming for decades here, but it's about to boom even more. If we look at all the housing starts, we may find that real estate agents might like to buy a bunch at cost and as sort of gifting them into the community when they buy a new home and move into the area. These are all different ideas moving forward. But to repeat, the ask is, and it already has support in the community, the ask is that the council approve the publication of the 50th anniversary edition of Wasaga Saga, and that money's for publication be put forward into the 2024 budget. And now, I'm happy to answer any and all of your questions.
Well, thanks very much, baby. We appreciated the great presentation and an absolutely amazing idea. And I was privileged and honored to know your sister. Brilliant lady, unique.
She was.
But knew her way, and was not afraid to express her opinions and her thoughts, and it's what made the Wasaga Saga the book it was. And so I think it's an excellent idea, but I'll ask questions or comments from members of council. Councilor Tims?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mr. Morrison, for your presentation. I have the privilege and pleasure to be the council representative on the library board, so I already knew a little bit about this project, and thank you to Patricia Copeland, a former councillor from the city of Barry, and also a library board council representative. She's been starting to be a great mentor to me. And one of the ideas that she brought forward to talk about when we had coffee was a community committee, and where everyone can put together events and celebrate this 50th anniversary and create a whole year of civic pride. So that's something that I'm advocating for. And I feel that the addition to the book and a new published edition would really be a key element to creating that year of pride for us. So I'm hoping that my councillors are as excited as I am about the opportunity. A question, did your sister Thelma write a column in the Wasaga Beach newspaper? She did, right?
Yes, it was called Between Us, and there was a very small localized publication of a collection of her articles labeled Between Us.
Well, when I bought my place here in 2004, I looked forward to every edition of that paper, so I could learn about the history of Wasaga Beach and as well as what was happening here, and I loved her writing style, so it was great. So thank you for the presentation. I'm very keen on the idea.
Well, thank you for your lovely comments on my sister. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tims.
Councilor White?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I've had the pleasure of knowing you now for many, many, many days, and well aware that you kissed the Blarney Stone too many times as a child. Very much in support of this, and I have read two-thirds of your sister's book so far. It was given to me by the mayor, and I do think it needs to go forward.
It's important to know that there's a place for slow learners in Congress.
Yes, thank you. Is that council? And so I very much appreciate of this book being updated for its 50th anniversary. As like the town, I was also established in 1974, and glad to see the reminder of my 50th birthday coming up. 50th birthday coming up. I do think though, that there will need to be some sort of amendment to the motion, and we'll see that coming up. So again, thank you for bringing this forward. I look forward to seeing it completed. I know that there are many opportunities to, or avenues to get the book out, and I will have to explore that, because you can simply self-publish on Amazon these days, or you can, you know, make physical printed copies and distribute them. So I know that the staff will have their work cut out for them there as to which avenue they recommend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry, deputy mayor, did you have anything? No, alright. Councillor Ego?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for your presentation, Dave. Yes, I'm a big fan of the book. I have been for many years. We're lucky enough to play in vacation here in the 60s, 70s, cottagers, and then full-time owners in the, oh, for over 20 years. So, and I too remember the column in the newspaper and look forward to it and always wanted to meet her, never had. But I've given that copy out so many times and it's on my coffee table always. So thank you. Needless to say, I'm a fan, and yes, incorporating, you know, up to date in the book would be fabulous. And thanks, it was great listening to you and look forward to moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Boulanger?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, David, and to your family for being so community-minded. A couple of things, I'm very supportive, and I'd like you to reach out to me later. I'm working on a couple of other projects to bring to council that might lend themselves well to the launch of your book. But I also am a big advocate for the taxpayer, and you didn't mention an amount of money that you thought might be needed to be set aside in the 2024 budget. And if you have done some research and have some kind of indication of what that cost might be, we'd, I think all would like to know that.
Well, thank you for the question, and perhaps I should have clarified this in my presentation. In our, in my discussion with the CAO, it was decided that that's really not our role, that that would be staff's role, and the reason no number was given is that the number is going to be determined on, on the size of the run. It's going to be determined on, for instance, I brought the hardcover copy, but I know that there are many more softcover copies. So until we know hard copy, soft copy, the size of the run, the number of pages, the pictures versus text, I can't give you a number. And to present a number based on some weird internet research estimate would, I thought, be at best misleading and at worst dishonest. So better to leave it open and let staff, which were indicated by, by the CEO they were willing to do, sorry, staff, but I mean, it's just a natural place to go. And so that's why I left it out.
Councillor, go ahead.
A follow-up through you, your worship, is just that, given that information, I would amend that not only we receive it for information, that we refer it back to staff to do some preliminary projections as to what would be deemed reasonable, both in the production of the book and the budget.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, I was going to say we would amend this motion just as we did the last one, not only for information, but to have staff come back with a report so as the council is well-informed. Being a resident who was born and raised in Wasaga Beach, I don't think we can put a number on what our history is. Our history here is very rich. And I can tell you that I have read this book and Mary's book probably, and you talk about slow learners, so if I wasn't such a slow learner, I probably wouldn't be sitting in this chair today. But at any rate, you know, I've read those books several times, and they too sit on my coffee table often, and I often refer to them. They're both excellent books, and I think this being our 50th anniversary coming up next year, and before I go any further, councillor, established?
That's a good word.
But I think it's an excellent idea, and I look forward to staff bringing a report back to us as soon as possible. We have no lag time, as you say, Dave. We, if we're going to do this, we need to get rolling, and so as soon as possible. So I'll just look, before I do, thank you, David, Jack, and Thelma, because I'm sure she's here with us today, and very proud of you two gentlemen as well. So thanks for, for all you do in our community, and thanks for this presentation. And Madam Clerk, do you have a revised or an amended resolution for us?
I do, your worship. Listening to the deliberations and the great presentation from Mr. Morrison, propose the following motion. That council receive the presentation from Dave Morrison, and that council approve the publication of the 50th anniversary edition of Wasaga Saga, and that staff be directed to include funds for the publication in the 2024 budget for council consideration.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I think we're probably looking for something much sooner rather than later or even midterm. And so I think what I would like to see, and I'll look to council when I'm finished here, is that a report come back to us perhaps at our next council meeting, if possible, that gives us the costs of this publication and what that may be, or a decent range, so as that council can make a decision, so as that we can get back to Dave and the team, if you will, to let them know whether or not we want them to get moving forward. Dave, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, and I'm probably interrupting in this process, but I'm trying to be helpful, is that your CAO in indicating that putting money into the 2024 budget was that, that the work that staff does on that is probably already started and is going to be considered and approved before 2024. And so that that would give him enough time to get some research done in order to come up with numbers. So, I mean, that was already thought of and anticipated. I'm assuming he's on vacation or something at the time, and well-earned, everybody has that, right? So yeah, that was, I've just, it's already been considered, and I totally appreciate that, those concerns, because obviously cost is a factor.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, David. So do you have something else, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you. Again, that council receive the presentation from Dave Morrison, and that council approve the publication of the 50th anniversary edition of Wasaga Saga, and that staff be directed to bring back a report on the cost of the 50th anniversary edition to council at a future meeting.
Alright. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and as long as we're clear, we want that as soon as possible, so preferably our next meeting, if that, if that is doable, that would be great. Councillor Boulanger, you have a comment?
Oh, there we go. Through you, your worship, just as it reads, we are approving the publication, I believe, and then it's just a case of how much we're going to spend on it. Was that the intent, or was the staff report back to council would be at the point we would make the approval?
So I don't think we can make the approval without knowing the expense, and so that's what we're looking for, is that staff to come back with that cost, and based on that cost is how council's going to say yea or nay. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I'll remove motion two from the recommendation.
Great. Alright then, so you have heard the motion. Could I have a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor White and Councillor Ego, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, David. Have a great day.
Thank you, your worship, and I'll make one final comment. As a retired teacher, and I also served on Barry City Council with Patricia, which is how we met and became friends, but slow learners are the best learners, because they never forget what they learn. Thank you very much for your attention today.
Thank you, David. I'll keep that in mind. Alright, we're now moving on with the rest of the agenda, moving on to item number six, government relations, and we do have our communications gal here, Sandra, for a verbal update. Sandra, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. So the purpose of this verbal update is to provide you with an update on advocacy and government relations efforts that staff are taking on behalf of council, and for the benefit of those that are joined here in the chambers as well watching at home, just to let you know that essentially our proactive government relations efforts are in support of council's priorities that are outlined and broken down into the 84 implementation actions that council has defined. These range from the redevelopment of the beachfront to advocating for a high school, looking for after-hours clinic funding assistance, et cetera. I'm pleased to provide you with an update that we have now confirmed as we prepare to attend the annual conference for the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. Pleased to report that we have now confirmed five meetings with either ministers, parliamentary assistants, or parliamentary assistants. We have confirmed meetings with the Ministry of Tourism, the Ministry of Education, the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry, the Ministry of Health, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and the Ministry of Energy. I'm also very pleased to report that just last week, on August the 2nd, we also had a very positive, very productive meeting with members, senior members of the minister's staff at the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. That conversation was a lengthy one, the audience was very receptive, and there will be follow-up conversations. So we will continue to move those conversations forward and develop those relationships with the minister's office. And we will continue to prepare for those meetings that take place in the city of London between August 20th and 23rd at AMO. And that is my update for today.
Thank you very much, Sandra. Any questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Boulanger?
Yes, through you, your worship, just congratulations to you and whoever else participated. I've now been on council almost eight years, and I think this is the highest number of deputations we've been able to receive, and I believe between our CAO, deputy CAO and mayor, that we have very important topics for each and every one of them. So I'm hopeful that some very good outcomes will occur.
Thank you very much, councillor. Thank you again, Sandra. Now, moving on to item number seven, the consent list, sorry, moving on, yeah, item seven, consent list, committee of the whole, we have item 7.1, and we'll now turn this over to community services and councillor Tims.
Thank you, your worship. The first item on the agenda is 7.1.1, the fire department monthly report. May I just confirm from the clerk that I do this first before moving into the consent agenda?
Through you, Madam Chair, absolutely, you're correct.
Thank you for that. So, welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Chair Tims, and good morning, members of council. The last monthly report brought before council covered the month of May, therefore I'm going to be covering both the months of June and July. The combined number of calls serviced by the fire department during these two months was 372 calls for service, included 13 fires, 19 motor vehicle collisions, 39 fire alarm activations, 23 requests for assistance, 30 public hazards and rescues, and 248 medical calls. We also completed 99 fire safety inspections, 33 hours of community outreach programming, and 15 hours of firefighter training. We've been busy. On July 18th, firefighters responded to a structure fire located at a multi-unit residential building, and upon arrival, firefighters found a resident inside the fire building who was attempting to extinguish the fire with a garden hose. The individual suffered first and secondary burns to their hands, as well as smoke inhalation. After assessment by paramedics, the individual was transported to hospital and was later released. After extinguishment of the fire, firefighters conducted an investigation and determined that the fire was the result of an electrical failure involving a cellphone that was being charged. Further investigation determined that nine of the units within the complex lacked working smoke alarms. The building's owner has since been charged by the fire department with nine counts of failing to install or maintain smoke alarms. Since the fire occurred, the owner has engaged a professional property management group who will oversee the property, including the upkeep of the building's fire, life safety equipment. I just wanted to highlight this scenario because it serves as a reminder that landlords are responsible to provide working smoke and carbon dioxide alarms, and fines and charges under the Fire Prevention and Protection Act can range from $360 to $50,000 and a year in jail per occurrence. Tenants can also face similar penalties when tampering or removing with alarms. If there's any questions from landlords or tenants, they are encouraged to reach out to the, to the fire department, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have or schedule an inspection of your facility. That concludes my monthly report, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. More of a comment, and I'm just happy to see that the fire department is, takes this serious and has levied some fines in this situation. I think it's, it's high time that landlords in the town of Wasaga Beach realize that they do have a responsibility to, to keep people safe and to make sure that fire alarms and smoke alarms and suppression equipment is annually inspected and working properly. And so I'm glad to hear that these fines have been laid, and hopefully it will be a lesson for all the other accommodation and landlords in Wasaga Beach to ensure that they're checking them every year. And I'll just comment, another great month and great job by the fire department. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, your worship. Anyone else from council with a comment or question? I have one, Chief. Is it common for a cellphone that is charging to trigger a fire or malfunction like that?
Thank you, councillor Tims. I wouldn't say it's common. It's certainly not a monthly occurrence that we see. We may see fires involving cellphones a couple of times a year here in Wasaga Beach. The fire marshal's office has highlighted a concern with lithium ion batteries, and they've actually just recently released a, communicated to all fire departments requesting that any fire involving a lithium ion battery is reported to the fire marshal's office. What we are finding is as more and more of these batteries, you know, become prevalent in the communities, and as more and more of them maybe being manufactured overseas and shipped into North America and not meeting North American standards, we do have a higher failure rate. The New York Fire Department has had a number of very, very serious fires involving lithium ion batteries being used in e-scooters, and they have quite the inspection and education campaign going on right now. So I think it's become a problem in the last few years, but we're just starting to see more of the effects in Ontario, so we'll be paying close attention to it. The biggest advice I can give to you is if a lithium ion battery could include a cellphone is damaged, is not working properly, or it's producing excessive heat while it's being charged, discontinue the use of it and dispose of it properly.
Thank you, Chief. With that, I will pass the motion resolved, or I will call for the motion, I guess that makes more sense, resolved that the community services section of coordinated committee received the June and July 2023 fire department reports for information. May I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Ego, seconded by councillor White. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. I'm now going to move on to the consent list recommendation. We do not have any pulled items, but I am aware that councillor Ego has a couple of items that she would like to comment on. Item 7.1.4, the fire chief's report on naloxone. Councillor Ego?
Thank you, councillor Tims, Chair. And yes, I want to commend the fire department on the naloxone, taking that on as the project and the first in Simcoe County. I think it's so needed, and we had a great conversation the other day, and I really appreciate that, Chief. And my question was about the distribution. I underlined here, like, to the public, so how does it work? And you were great to explain it to me, so I would love if you'd let the people know how this works. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Ego. So to summarize the report, we're looking for authorization to enter into an agreement with the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit in order to become a naloxone kit distribution partner. So currently in Wasaga Beach, there is five participating pharmacies, as well as the community health center that you, member of the public, can pick up a kit from. It's limited in that you can only access these kits during regular business hours. So the goal of the fire department is to expand access for the community. So one, we will be able to provide kits on a 24-hour basis. We plan on being able to distribute these kits from both of the fire stations, but as well in the community from the fire trucks. So it is not uncommon at all that we respond to medical emergencies involving opioid overdoses, or we happen to be in the community conducted accommodations inspections, and we may come across scenarios where it would be advantageous for an individual to receive a kit. So we plan on being able to carry these on our trucks, so when the opportunity arises, we can provide a small amount of training and education, ask, answer questions, and leave a kit for an individual or a family member who might require it.
Thank you for that, Chief. Yes, I see it as a great preventative, it can assist, it's a Band-Aid for the solution, it's, you know, Band-Aid for this. I guess, it's not a solution, but it's a Band-Aid to assist and prevent catastrophes from happening and that a home could have access to someone that may ever be in need. So, I think I've got it right?
That's correct. I would say that the fire department is not positioned well to provide the solution to the core reason. to provide the solution to the core reasons why we have the opioid crisis. However, I think that we have, can play a viable part of the end of the process. So we can make sure that emergency equipment is in the hands of the right people. And as, you know, last ditch effort where we can help out the community that way. I should also mention that as far as we understand it, we will be the first fire department in Simcoe County to distribute these kits. However, the Simcoe County Paramedic Services recently entered into a similar agreement and they also are able to distribute kits off the ambulances as well.
Thanks again.
Thank you, Counselor Ego. I was going to also comment how I, when I read the statistics of the number of opioid-related deaths, it's really quite staggering in a short period of time. And I was very pleased when I read that the fire department has taken such a proactive approach to be the first fire department to be distributing the kits in the county. So thank you for that. I think that Counselor Ego, you also, sorry, and thank you. It's not usually my section, so I'm struggling through a bit. 7.2.4, which is a report on sidewalk development, is also a report that Counselor Ego would like to comment on today. Beg your pardon, that's the public work section. So we're not going to do that. I would like to comment myself on 7.1.3, the Age Friendly Community Advisory Committee Minutes. There's a section in the minutes where they talk about the business project to recognize and train businesses that can provide service specifically to people in our community that are a little bit older and might need some extra support. I feel that this kind of is important to another committee, which is the Economic Development and Tourism Advisory Committee as well as Accessibility Committee. So as the Age Friendly Community Advisory Committee is looking towards creating a working group, I think it would be an opportunity for these committees perhaps to participate as well. So just really a suggestion, your worship, that here's a great opportunity for a project that really touches not just people that are requiring more help due to their age, but barriers sometimes within business for accessibility. And also the Advisory Committee, Economic Development and Tourism could really benefit by some of this training that the county is providing. So I'm looking at our economic development officer as I make that comment. So thank you very much. With that, I will ask that we pass the consent list recommendation. Resolve that Community Services Section of Committee of the Whole hereby receive the August 10th, 2023 Consent List Item 7.1 and all the recommendations contained therein will be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion, which we did not do, and voted on separately. So could I please have a mover and seconder for that motion? Moved by Counselor White, seconded by Counselor Belange. All in favor? Passed. Your worship, this concludes the Community Services Section. And now we will move on to the public work section with your permission.
Absolutely. Move on to public works, which is your section. And again, thank you, Counselor Tim, for filling in for Counselor Delaio on that today. You did an excellent job.
Thank you. So we have not any pulled reports in this section, but we do have Counselor Ego's request to comment on the sidewalk development report, 7.2.4.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Tims. It was a comment that I had on it that regarding the sidewalks, I know it was a big topic we talked of during the election and met with many residents. And I'm just very thankful to see in the report that it's moving ahead and I think the residents will be happy about it. And yeah, it's needed, moving from rural to urban. As I was reading those reports, it's interesting how difficult it is and what's involved. It is not easy. So thank you.
Your worship, did you wish to comment?
If I may, thank you, Madam Chair. So just maybe a quick question for Mike, filling in for Kevin today. So a great report and we understand that the cost of sidewalks is not cheap, but it is certainly something that the good folks at Wasaga Beach have told us loud and clear for many years, for many, many years, that they want to see more of and that we need to find a solution to this. And I couldn't agree with them more. And so are there other solutions to sidewalks other than simply paved shoulders? For example, some communities use pavement for sidewalks as opposed to concrete, so on and so forth. Are there other solutions that we could be or should be looking at to reduce that cost, but ensuring that we can still get a safe travel area for pedestrians, especially our children and our seniors walking to and from school or appointments or wherever else?
Yes, your worship, through you, Madam Chair. That is an option to use asphalt hotmix rather than concrete. You can build the barrier curb and have that, some people regard it as a paved shoulder, but it's really a paved sidewalk behind the curb. There's still the cost of the curb, of course, and the drainage that goes with that. You have to put in catch basin, storm sewer. So I mean, it is costly. That's why the paved shoulder is always the most affordable solution. You're just basically widening off the edge of the road itself and delineating with the painted line. We actually did do a paved sidewalk on Sunnydale Road South from the Sunnydale Trails Secondary Plan northerly almost to Knox Road. You'll notice there is a barrier curb and the paving behind that. So that is an option.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Is it considerably cheaper? Or let's not say cheaper, let's say considerably more economical?
I'm not sure how considerably. I wouldn't say it's half the price. I mean, like I said, you're still paying for the curb, the storm sewer, everything else to raise that elevation to kind of separate pedestrians better from the traveled road. The only saving is the difference in costs, the concrete versus asphalt, which that in itself is, you know, it could be called considerable, but with everything else involved in the project costs would be the same.
So finally, if I may, Madam Chair, I'd really like to see something come back to council that shows us what that differential is, whether it be we can do more sidewalks quicker or more sidewalks just in general as opposed to them being concrete. It's something, again, I'll just reiterate that we've heard loud and clear for many, many years. And it is a concern in our community on many of our roadways that we do not have a safe walking area for pedestrians. And I understand that paved shoulder, but there's no barrier there. I mean, if a car veers off, there's nothing there to stop it from continuing on to anybody as opposed to having a proper curb. And I know we do have rumble strips as well, but by the time someone realizes they're hitting the rumble strip often, it's too late anyway. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, your worship. Are there any further comments on this item? Counselor Ego?
Thank you. Yes, back to, and truly not an expert on this, but I recall reading about it some years ago and it's been on my radar. And it's permeable pavement. And I understand many cities are using that. And I just wonder if we could have a conversation sometime. It just came up to my head again now. And I had hoped to make the Good Roads Conference and go to some seminars on it and I was unable. So perhaps we could just, you know, put that on the radar.
Yes, Counselor Ego, through you, Madam Chair. Is that something that council would like to see in this follow-up report that speaks to the cost difference with paved sidewalks and concrete sidewalks? We could also speak to the permeable pavers in that report?
I would think so, but it goes down on the ground and it's to do with pavement. And I have read about it, that the water goes through, it's caught underneath. It's not new, it's out there. And I'll certainly get some literature on it. So I think it works along with that report.
Sorry, Madam Chair, through you. If I can suggest that we raise the staff direction for council report in the Staff Requested Council Report section of the agenda and we can get a mover and seconder on that request.
Thank you. Counselor Belange, did you have a comment?
Yes, through your worship and to Mike and engineering. My understanding with permeable pavement is that generally speaking, that would be a larger surface, like a sidewalk separated with grass on either side. I'm not sure you get a significant impact on permeable versus regular as opposed to a driveway or a parking lot. But...
Yes, Counselor Belange, through you, Madam Chair. You're right. I mean, obviously the larger the area, the more infiltration you'll be promoting. But any form of infiltration being promoted, it is reducing the amount of runoff, obviously. It's quite a costly solution though, because you have to make a significantly deep granular base to allow for that permeability. And there's different types. There's paving stones that have spaces. There's even a type of asphalt that is completely permeable. It's full of air voids. So I mean, there are options, but yes, having a sidewalk one and a half meter with that water going directly in the ground, it would reduce runoff, not as much as a parking lot or something, of course, but...
Any follow-up comments or questions? Seeing none, I will now read the consent recommendation. Resolve that the Public Works Section of Committee of the Whole hereby receive the August 10th, 2023 Consent List Item 7.2 and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled, which we had none and voted on separately. May I have a mover, your worship, Brian Smith, seconded by Counselor Belange? All in favor? Carried. This concludes the Public Work Section of Committee and I will now pass it to Counselor Belange for Development Services.
Thank you, Counselor Tims. Being that there are no items pulled or items for comment, I'll move directly to the consent recommendation and resolve that the Development Service Section of Committee of the Whole hereby receive the August 10th, 2023 Consent List Items 7.3 and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted. And could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor Tims and Deputy Mayor Snell? And all in favor? Carried unanimously. I will now turn the floor over to Deputy Mayor for General Government Section.
Thank you, Counselor Belage. I'm aware that 7.4.10 has been pulled by yourself, Counselor Belage. And before passing the consent recommendation, does anyone have any comments? I'm aware of Counselor White having a couple of comments on some of the items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First comment is for 7.4.2-1. This is a letter received and I just wanted to bring attention to it through a comment addressing the Right to Repair movement. Although many of us in an urban setting, Wasaga Beach is urban, I suppose, we look at little things like technology and devices as this is an important movement when it comes to that. But for a rural component and someone who has some farming experience, the right to repair is very important to our local farmers. And so I just wanted to make sure that if you haven't read this letter, to read this letter and see how important the Right to Repair movement is, not only to our community, but to our rural friends.
Thank you, Counselor White. Is there any other questions or comments in regards to this matter? Seeing none, if you want to go ahead with your second comment, thank you.
Thanks again. Again, this is for 7.4.2-3. It's a comment. And again, bringing attention to an issue through a received letter that all municipalities struggle with. And we addressed this a little bit earlier about looking for upper levels of government to assist municipalities to manage things on a more regional perspective. And this one has to do with short-term rentals. And we know how short-term rentals not only impact our economy for the better and for the worse, but also have a huge impact on communities' ability to have affordable housing and address homelessness, as this is a huge component that plays into that. So again, just a comment around other levels of government participating in the common goal around short-term rentals for all of our communities.
Thank you, Counselor White. Are there any other comments in regards to this letter? Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you. More a question. Counselor had asked a while ago to get a report back from staff and staff were working on a short-term rental strategy and rules, bylaws and regulations around that. I can tell you that this summer I have received several phone calls and emails with respect to issues with short-term rentals here in Wasaga Beach. So I'd just like to ask, if I may, Madam Chair, where we're at with that report, those bylaws, and when we can expect those to come back to council?
Go ahead, Deputy CIO.
Yeah, thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair. As we've started to undertake that already, so we got Carly into a special project. So that's one of her tasks that she's assigned. So she's compiling data from other municipalities that have already engaged before us, trying to understand best practices, you know, what's worked, what's not worked. So that's coming to us now. In terms of timelines, I suspect we should at least get an update to council by the end of this year and probably going into next year with a more solid plan in terms of bylaws and what to pass. It's really, most municipalities have probably taken better part of a year to put this all together. Community engagement involved with the community, getting feedback from those who run short-term rental accommodations, those who are opposed. You know, we have to have that broad conversation.
Thank you. And follow-up?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So is it safe to say that we will get this information back and we could have some significant bylaws and rules in place by the next summer in order to move forward? So is that the people who live here full-time can enjoy their right to quiet enjoyment?
Yes, very much so. I'm assuming you're at least planning that that would probably come to council by end of first quarter next year, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy CIO, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, your worship. Is there any other? Go ahead, Counselor Tims.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question for Deputy CIO. Did I hear you mention that there will be some public engagement?
Yes, we certainly do and plan to have public engage in the conversation. So maybe what I can do is maybe I'll circle back after this meeting, maybe for the next, maybe just give you a wee bit of an update and kind of a Gantt chart, a plan of how this will unfold and what the key deliverables will be. So I'll commit to doing that for the 24th meeting. So then you can kind of see the, kind of at least the pieces of the pillars that we're putting in place. And we might not have, you know, exact dates when they'll be executed, but at least you get a sense of the plan and how it's going to unfold.
Thank you. The reason why I ask that question is I'm aware that some of the business organizations are kind of doing some of this work on their own as well. And I think it would be important to engage with them, perhaps separately. You know, a town hall meeting with the business community might bring different conversations than a town hall meeting with the residential community that are being impacted. So thank you, just a comment from me.
Yep, for sure. And that's duly noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions in regards to this?
I just had one comment I see our neighbors in Collingwood have done and are actively, heavily promoting a survey for folks. So I think any way to be able to get the public engagement and feedback, it'll be interesting to see what results their survey achieves as well. Because I do agree with Counselor White. This is, the trickle-down effect of this is incredible. Because when you have a duplex, for example, that's out in the rental market for full-time residents, turn into an Airbnb, then you lose two houses, right? So, and it's an issue that's facing so many communities. So I appreciate the staff's work in trying to move this report forward. Thank you. So I'll move to resolve the consent... Sorry, go ahead, Counselor White. You have one more comment?
Thank you, yes. So just holding up the comment section here in my notes. My next comment is referencing 7.4.8. This is the facade improvement report. And this is a really happy one. In my professional career, obviously culinary food production and tourism is what I do for a living outside of being counselor. So being able to see a new restaurant open up in town So being able to see a new restaurant open up in town and replace one that has departed is a happy sight. In meeting with the owner with councillor Ego and councillor Tims for their grand reopening, they did pass a comment to us that they are opening up at a location in a surrounding municipality, and how much easier and much more delightful it was to work with the town staff at Wasaga Beach, and how much quicker they were able to get this location off the ground. So I just wanted to tip my hat to staff for being recognized in the community, for being efficient and quick in getting businesses up and running, and to let people know that not only does the facade of this building, the Tonbury, which is a town in Thailand, not the town down the highway, Tonbury Thai cuisine, not only does it look good from the outside, but if you go inside, they actually did an extensive renovation inside, and it's absolutely stunning. So I hope people check it out. And that's my comment for the facade improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor White. Are there any other comments around this matter? Okay, seeing none. Any further comments?
No.
No, you're good. Okay. So resolved that the general government section of committee.
There's one item polled?
Yeah, but I'm just going to pass the consent agenda and then come back to your polled item. Sorry, councillor Belanger. Resolve that the general government section of committee of the whole hereby receive the August 10, 2023 consent list item 7.4, and that all the recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Tims and councillor White, all those in favor? And that carries. Moving on to the one polled item, which was 7.4.10, that was polled by councillor Belanger. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and sorry, I thought you forgot about me for a second. Basically, I polled this item because clearly our entry signs today are static. They have a clear message, and I felt that, you know, we should really be moving in and to investigate electronic signing, which have a lot more flexibility on at least one of these signs. Certainly, I'm very aware that we're not in a position for a major expenditure in this challenging budget year, but that perhaps there was an opportunity to lease to own or those types of things. I did engage in some good conversation with our economic development coordinator and our director of communications and intergovernment affairs, and I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin to speak to that. I see Sandra's left, but you were, you can certainly speak for both of your positions on this, and they kind of convinced me that there's another option, so.
Right, so through you, Madam Chair. So before I jump in to talking about the digital panel and the entry sign, I'm actually just going to back it up a little bit and talk about the purpose of entry signs. So entry signs often serve as the initial introduction to the town's essence and branding, playing an important role in enhancing the aesthetic appeal of the community. Entry signs are often brand ambassadors, and they provide the first impression and promise to the type of experience we promise in our community. So our team held multiple meetings over the past few months with various departments regarding the entry signs, and this included the discussion on adding a potential digital messaging board to those entry signs that are proposed. However, through research and consideration, it led us to conclude that the digital signs would detract from the intended purpose of the entry signs, which I just previously mentioned. So while digital signs have the advantage of conveying messaging, we believe it's best to maintain a clear separation between the purpose of entry signs and digital messaging. So distinction allows us to effectively communicate the strong sense of welcome and community identity without overwhelming visual clutter on the entry signs. When communities incorporate digital panels on entry signs, it often distracts from the artwork and welcome sign. It adds too much information on the entry sign and really just looks busy. So neighboring communities like Elmville and Angus introduced digital entry signs, and our staff felt it was just a good example of how digital signs can overshadow the artwork, resulting in a very busy appearance during the daytime and especially during nighttime hours. So the entry sign stands as a warm welcome to the town, while any following signage can be utilized for messaging, whether it's digital signs, letter boards, or graphic, like graphic board inserts. So there's many options to how we can provide messaging to those passing by. So our teams decided that messaging at the entry points and welcome signs should be distinct, and staff will be bringing forward a second recommendation on a coordinated approach to strategic messaging that conveys town messaging and announcements on signs at entry points, which will work with those entry signs. So staff will begin to look into the pricing for those types of messaging boards, and we're proposing to include it in the 2024 budget.
Thank you, Caitlin. Is there a follow-up? Go ahead, councillor Belanger.
Yeah, so after having a really good discussion, I believe there is merit for both an electronic sign that would, you know, promote our advance, allow for messaging, it could warrant a traffic congestion, it could do a lot of things where from a computer it can be changed very easily. But I do agree that the welcome sign has another distinct purpose. But with that said, I think there was, reminded by councillor Eagle, that there may have been something missed, and I'm, can I let you speak to that?
Go ahead, councillor Ego.
Thank you, through the chair. Yes, I had a good conversation, too, with our economic development officer on this, and I appreciate all of the work gone in for a whole team to do that. But I looked and I noticed bienvenue was not on the sign, and so we discussed that. And so that may be something that you would wish to amend, or you can speak to that, Caitlin, for sure.
Yeah, sure. So through you, Madam Chair. So we did consider adding the bilingual messaging onto the sign. The design team decided to keep it very simple and keep it elegant, but I would certainly welcome including, like, the bilingual French welcome underneath Wasaga Beach if council wishes. I think that'd be a great addition. But I'd also say, when we're adopting these bilingual practices, I don't think it should stop at the entry sign. I think we need to continue it onto our website to make sure that we're also providing French messaging there, and then also on our tourism collateral as well.
Thank you, Caitlin. Yes, I guess I just noticed every welcome sign I think we've ever had just has the welcome and then bienvenue simply, so you can take it from there. But that was my thought, that we put a lot of money into garnering relationships with Quebec, and I thought on our welcome sign it was important.
Thank you, councillor Ego. Any other further comments on this? Go ahead, councillor Tims.
I would just add to that, Madam Chair, that the economic development and tourism advisory committee is investigating the opportunity to twin with another town in Quebec. So it kind of reinforces moving into being more language-friendly with our largest probably sector of tourism, especially with longer-stay groups. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tims. Go ahead, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So although I hear and agree that perhaps we don't want to clutter our entry signs, I think it is important to note that we do have to find a solution then for messaging somehow coming into and throughout town. All my experience that I have had on council, I have heard countless times from not only businesses and citizens of town, but folks visiting, and that is that they don't know what's going on. I wasn't aware that there was a concert. I wasn't aware that there was a family event at the Rakplex. And of course, in this day and age, we're often not aware, because we just don't pay attention unless it affects us directly. But I do feel that, with all due respect to staff, that we're missing the boat on this type of communication still, and we have a lot of work to do. And so I don't know what that solution is, but I would certainly like to see some time and effort spent on this to ensure that if it's not our entry signs, and I get the whole, you know, cluttering that, it makes sense to me, but that we are looking then for throughout the community to have digital messaging that is quality, is easily changed, is controlled from an office where we can make changes quickly. We can then announce events, we then can announce weather, we can announce traffic, amber alerts. And I'm not so sure that we wouldn't be able to sell, to help recoup those costs, advertising within those digital menu boards to local businesses. So it's important, I think, that we don't forget about it. Maybe it's not on our entry sign, but we need to really have a hard look at looking, at ensuring that we are coming up with a solution, because it is, it's a problem. It has been a problem for a long time, and we've known that, and we need to fix it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, your worship. I'll just, councillor Belanger?
Yes, thank you through you, Deputy Mayor. A couple more items, just in discussion with a couple of members of council, there was some suggestion that we need to discuss the recommendation of design A over design B. But also, you know, we want to make sure that the supplier, and I believe it may be the same supplier that's been doing some of our wayfinding signage, that we have an understanding of the longevity of these signs, because they are expensive and hopefully they have a very significant life expectancy. But to go on to the options available, staff is recommending design A. And as I looked at this, and again, I know some of the other councillors, or at least one other, was leaning towards B. But I'm wondering if the white lettering really stands out, but the configuration on option B, that sort of the designating that we're the longest freshwater beach in the world with the starburst, but in white as opposed to blue, could be another option. And I know, you know, everybody has an opinion, but I think, you know, we need to all be in agreement that we get this right, and it's what we want for our community. So Caitlin, I'd leave it to you, but I think we should open up a little bit of discussion as to what the sign looks like. I think we'll all agree that they need to be replaced, and the 3D effect is very good, and the overall concept is very good. So maybe we just need a little bit of fine tuning.
Thank you, councillor Belanger. Caitlin, did you want to, do you have a response?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the reason, so staff definitely support both design types that we have presented to council. The reason why we ended up landing on design A is just because it's a simple and clean option that we thought really radiates our branding without actually including the logo that makes it the sign a little busier than the option A. So if council has any further feedback on the signs, we can certainly fine tune the designs, because I'll be, the next step after this is bringing it forward in an RFP, and I can bring that to council for approval as well.
Go ahead, councillor Belanger.
Just in follow-up, like, I mean, if we approve in principle and we go with an RFP, I'm assuming the configuration of the lettering wouldn't change the cost. So if we approve it today, I don't know what the best method is, but I personally would maybe like to see a couple more options, and, but we could approve in principle and the funds, and that could be something that's finalized prior to it going out to RFP or giving that information to the supplier of choice at a later date.
Any comment to that?
Yeah, so we can certainly do that. So we could bring it back to our designer just to make like the changes, including the bilingual welcome under the Wasaga Beach. And then that way, council can see the final sign before we actually send it off, pay for it, so you know exactly what we're getting before we install it. And then also the change to the logo.
Just a final comment. If council wants to vote on the options in front of them, I don't want to slow it down because of a single opinion. If everybody is okay with A, I just thought the thickness of the lettering in option B and the starburst was a little more interesting, but like I say, that's just one opinion, and there, we could be endless one.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. For council's consideration, based on the discussion that we've had, we could defer the report. The motion has not, is not in council's possession as of yet, so we can just receive the report and refer back to staff for more information and options if council so desires. That's just for consideration as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councillor White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was happy with the recommendation when I read this report, but now I've read it again here as we've been sitting here, and one of the images just kind of caught my eye. And to be included in the new motion is the sign on Sunnydale, which is the middle photograph there on the thing. If I'm not mistaken, that is situated on private property. Are we, if we replace this sign, are we going to move it onto town-owned property? I guess that'd be something that I wouldn't suspect you would know offhand, Caitlin, or maybe you do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, so it has been flagged to us that it is on private property. We would be relocating the sign. We'd be find more appropriate places to place each, all three of them, and they would be at the boundaries of the town.
Thank you, Caitlin. Any further comments? No? Okay. Madam Clerk? No? Okay. Madam Clerk, I'll look to you, please, for the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the conversation, I'll propose the following motion, that the report titled "Replacement of Town Entry Signs" to the Joint Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting of August 10, 2023 be received, and that the Joint Committee of the Whole refer this report back to staff to bring it back a report with more options and design, excuse me, with more design options.
Thank you. Can I get a mover and a seconder? Councillor White and councillor Tims, all in favor? And that carries unanimously. That now concludes the general government, and I'll pass the chair back to Mayor Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor, and now moving on into the item. This is a point where we normally take a 30-minute break, but I'm thinking we're skipping along here, and time's going well, so perhaps we want to waive that break. Is that fine with everybody, or do you want to take five minutes?
Five.
All right, so maybe we'll take five minutes. So do you have a motion to waive the 30 minutes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, your worship. The proposed motion that Joint Committee of the Whole and Council waive Section 4.04B of the procedural bylaw, and that the Committee of the Whole session recess for five minutes and move into council session to receive a report on the proceedings of the Committee of the Whole session.
Thank you. I'm just going to change it slightly to be 10 minutes, because we'll never get council back here in five minutes. I've tried that before, so 10 minutes it will be. You've heard the question to move in a seconder. Go ahead, councillor White, councillor Tims, all in favor. Motion carries unanimous, and we'll take 10 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, and welcome back, everybody. We're on item number eight, which is the rise and move to council. Eight point one, I have a resolution resolved that the committee of the whole session rise and move into council session to receive the report on the proceedings of the committee of the whole session. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Councillor Boulanger and Councillor Timms, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number nine, council session. I have a resolution resolved that the recommendations of the committee of the whole session for the meeting of August 10th, 2023 be adopted as a resolution of council. Mover and a seconder, please. Councillor White and Deputy Mayor Snell, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 10, the consent list. It is resolved that the council session of the joint committee of the whole and council hereby receive the August 10th, 2023 consent list, item 10, and that all recommendations contained therein be adopted, excluding agenda items pulled from the motion and voted on separately. Can I have a mover and a seconder here, please? Moved by Councillor White, seconded by Councillor Boulanger, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Item 10.1 is the adoption of the minutes. Oh, no, we've done that, sorry. Moving on to item number 11, council request for staff reports, and I'll turn to the clerk for this. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Your Worship. During the public works section of the meeting, there was a request for a staff report, so I'll put the following before council with help from the manager of engineering, that council requests staff to prepare an information report outlining difference in cost of various sidewalk options, including mixed asphalt, concrete, and permeable papers.
All right, you've heard the question. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councillor Ego, seconded by Councillor Timms, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And moving on to item number 12, notices of motion, we have none. Item 13 is closed session. We have a resolution resolved that pursuant to the municipal Act 2001 as amended, the next portion of the August 10th, 2023, joint committee of the whole and council meeting will move into closed session to consider the following matters. Event on municipal property. Joint committee of the whole council of June 29th, 23 minutes. Special council meeting of July 13th, 2023. You've heard the question. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Councillor Boulanger and seconded by Councillor Ego, all in favor? That motion carries and will now move into closed session.
Thank you very much, Chris. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're now coming back of closed session into open session and I will ask the clerk to arise and report please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Counsel-
Thank you very much, Chris. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're now coming back of closed session into open session, and I will ask the clerk do a rise and report, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Council entered closed session at 12:15 p.m. to discuss the following matter: Item 13.1.1, Event on Municipal Property. As a result of this discussion, staff direction was provided in accordance with the Municipal Act. The following motion is also before council for consideration: That council approve $23,000 for signs to implement a community safety zone in the downtown area, and that the sign cost be funded through the general policing reserve; further, that a bylaw be brought -- a bylaw and report be brought forward to a future meeting designating the downtown as a community safety zone.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel, you've heard the question. We have a mover and a seconder for that, please. Counselor Ego, and seconded by Counselor White, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now moving on to a confirmatory bylaw. It is resolved that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Town of Wasaga Beach at its regular meeting, how Tuesday, August 10, 2023, be received, and to be deemed and read a first, second, and third time, passed and numbered number 2023-85. Mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Timms and Counselor Bollonge, all in favor? That motion carries unanimously, and this council meeting is adjourned.